What's that?
Yeah, I do it.
Counsel, you ready?
Ready.
Staff, ready?
Yes.
Ready.
Ready now? All right. Call to order, the January 28th, 2025 City Council Record Meeting. Let's start with an invocation pledge led by Councilmember Delaine Seigerman.
If you'll just pray with me, please. Dear Heavenly Father, we thank you for this rain, however little it might be. We're very appreciative. We pray for those that have lost their homes in Los Angeles and around that area. And we pray that that will not happen to the state of Texas. And if it should, that we put a protection around our firefighters that go in to try to save our property, people, pets, and our homes. So be with all of those situations, dear Lord. Tonight, be with us as we decide important things for the city of Kerrville and that we would always make those decisions with keeping what's best for Kerrville in mind. In your Son's name, we pray. Amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible).
Mr. Cunyus.
Thank you, Mayor. We've got three quick announcements tonight, two of them for Parks and Rec. Parks and Rec is getting a fast start on summer events. As of, I think it's February 1st, you can begin to register for some of their summer programs. You can do that online or actually just scanning the little thing there at the right. They've got some big programs coming up. The disc golf tournament, they're going to have two this year, March 29th and August 2nd at Shriners University. The skateboard competition has actually been moved from, I think it's usually in July, but they've moved it to April. Get a little cooler weather, we're hoping, at Singing Wind Park. A cornhole tournament, June 18th, at Trailhead Beer Garden at Shriner. The kids' triathlon, which usually closes out the summer, August 9th at Shriners University. And then they're going to have first time basketball knockout competition, September 13th at Carver Park. And again, you can begin to register for those February 1st. So check those out. We still have tickets left for the someone special dance. That's in about two and a half weeks. I think there were 99 sold this morning, so encouraging people to check that out and take your sons and daughters to that. Lot of fun. And Chief is looking for some good men and women for the Citizens Police Academy. Start February 11th to April 1st. Applications are available. You can stop by the police department. Chief, when do they close applications, sir?
We'll close them out about a week in advance.
About a week in advance. All right. So great program. Always have great feedback on it. It's a good way to learn about everything you can about the Kerrville Police Department. So we encourage citizens to check that out, too. And that will do it for me.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Counsel, do you have any announcements of community interest?
Not yet.
I do.
Go ahead.
I guess I'll start for all three of us. This morning, so it's Catholic Schools Week, and we were asked if we would come to Notre Dame School this morning to take part in honoring America. Today was their day to honor the nation. They started off with singing the National Anthem and the Pledge of Allegiance and the Texas Pledge. The youngsters left, but the eighth graders stayed back. And they had six questions they asked us. And let me tell you what, for eighth graders asking questions, these were pretty intense. What's the city doing to ensure our safety while we're at school? What's the city doing to make Kerrville greener? We're like, well, recycling. And one of the young men that was there, he goes, well, you're not recycling everything. And we're like, well, it gets picked up, it goes to San Antonio for recycling. He goes, y'all aren't doing that styrofoam. So very valid point. I mean, the young man was on point. But really, kind of the neatest thing that happened was what they gave us for going. And we all got thank yous and cards and, you know, the pre-K.
Yep.
But, you know, thank you, bless you, we love you. And it was heartfelt for the youngsters, for the young people, to have us there and ask us to be part of their ceremony this morning.
Yeah.
So that was something we took part in this morning.
They asked questions like, what prompted us to get into city government? And, you know, when should they start thinking about that? If that was their career path? And stuff like that. It was just really a pretty moving question and answer session with those eighth graders because they were in tune with city government and really acted like they wanted to be able to help in some way. So it made me feel really good about what they were learning in school.
I was glad I had some help there because it was tough. Between the three of us, we got through.
Yeah. Some tough questions. Yeah. There were some tough questions.
Just look for them, maybe in 15 years or so.
Yeah.
You might see them up here.
Yep.
Any other community, announcements of community interest? Anybody? All right. Visitor Citizen Forum. Shelley, do we have anyone signed up?
Yes, sir. We do have one, Anthony Farmer.
Mr. Farmer.
Good evening, Mayor Haring, council members, and fellow citizens. My name's Anthony Farmer, 1871 Junction Highway, Kerrville. I thank you for the opportunity to speak with you tonight. I serve as the Executive Director, as many of you know, for Prodigal Road Ministries, which is a faith-based organization to provide recovery and discipleship programs through our Genesis House Initiative, one of our men's discipleship homes. And I'm here tonight to respectfully request that we look at an amendment for the city of Kerrville's group home ordinance to include an exemption for accredited recovery residences. Specifically, we're asking that recovery residences that are accredited through the Texas Recovery Oriented Housing Network, or TRONE for short, that they be exempted from the group home ordinance. This request is rooted in recognition established under Texas House Bill 299, which affirmed that accredited recovery residences are not classified or cannot be classified as group homes, halfway houses, or boarding homes. So with us achieving that accreditation, it really puts us in a, it's our own category as a recovery residence. And so we cannot actually be, we can't classify ourselves as a group home in order to achieve that accreditation. And so it kind of is one of those things that we're kind of in a limbo between, we're falling under the group home ordinance with the city, or the city as far as our occupancy. But to get the accreditation that we have, we can't be considered a group home. Now, that being said, we have gone through rigorous standards, and in order to become a TRONE-accredited recovery residence, we had to go above and beyond what the municipal government requires with the group home ordinance. And I'm happy to share any of that information with you guys. I think I've shared a lot of it in previous meetings. I did send out an email. Thank you, Mr. McKinney, for responding to that email. And I did follow up with Mike Hayes and asked questions, and his recommendation was that I just reach out to the city council. And so that's what I'm doing today, just asking the city to, the council, to move on either designating that to staff for that to be moved forward, or just, we just want to add an exemption to the current group home ordinance. That also would encourage other homes in town to achieve this accreditation, which actually sets the standard for what's expected from the city and what's encouraged by the city. And so the accreditation that we had to go through consisted of me creating a 270-something page document with policies and procedures. We had to approve our financial processes. We had to approve peer governance, that our men are actually involved in the governance of the house, that we are following all the HIPAA protocols, that our Behave Health Portal that we use for client documentation, everything that we do. We had to go to extreme lengths to prove that we do it according to the, and this is all according to the National Alliance of Recovery Residences, which is a national accrediting body that has state affiliate organizations, and we are accredited through the state affiliate organization, which is TRONE. So our house is a place where we provide discipleship training, vocational training, life skill development training. It's a structured environment in which the men come in, and they're there for anywhere between six to 12 months on average. And every man is assessed when they come in, and then we reassess as we go throughout the program. But we've seen tremendous success with our men. We've been very, very active in the community. And I think what we're doing speaks for itself, but we would just really like to avoid having to over-govern ourselves and have to go through, we have to get accredited, and we have to go through a two-year evaluation every two years. But having to get evaluated every year and going through the city group home ordinance currently makes us have to go through a bunch of hoops that I think that we actually are already meeting, but it's just at a larger level.
Right.
Yeah. Thank you so much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any others?
Yes, sir.
All right. The next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. Any item can be removed by a council member, staff, or a member of the public. Does anybody care to remove any item from the consent agenda? All right. Before we have a motion on the consent agenda, Shelley needs to read in item 3A.
Ordinance number 2025-02, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 94 Taxation, Article 3, occupancy of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Kerrville, Texas by embedding various sections relating to the imposition of a hotel occupancy tax by revising the definition of consideration to clarify what costs are subject to the tax and to clarify the process for reports and audits containing a cumulative clause containing the savings and severability clause, ordering publication, and providing other matters relating to the subject. This ordinance 2025-02 was approved unanimously on first reading, January 14th, 2025.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there a motion then on the consent agenda?
I'll make a motion that we approve all the consent agenda items under 3, meaning 3A, 3B, 3C, and 3D.
Is there some? Many seconds. I heard Jeff first, so. All right, all in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. Item 4A, again, would you mind reading that in? Or would you like me to read it in? I know you have a cough tonight. Would you like me to read it in?
Certainly.
All right. 4A, ordinance number 2025-01, second reading. An ordinance amending Chapter 46 Environment of the City's Code of Ordinances by adding a new Article 2 tree preservation, which adopts regulations for the preservation of trees, providing for penalties not to exceed $2,000, ordering publication, providing an effective date, and providing other matters related to the subject.
And we do have three citizen speakers.
Good. And I don't see Mr. Paxton here to answer questions. Who's going to be up?
I will attempt to be Mr. Paxton, but really, you know, on the updates, we had taken all the other updates from first reading to second reading to address council's issues. And other than that, there was no substantive changes other than that.
Thank you, sir. Who has signed up to speak to us?
Bill Rector.
Dr. Rector.
Thank you, all the mayor and counsel. I'm here really to thank you for getting to this point with a difficult ordinance. You studied it hard. You've considered how to make it fair to everyone. And I want to thank you for your hard work to get to this point. This is part of the 2050 Plan, and it's an important part to keep our city in the appearance that the 2050 Plan has asked of our community. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nikki Caines.
Ms. Caines.
Good evening, Nikki Caines. I'm here because I wasn't here the first night that it was read in. And I've been going through the ordinance, and I have some concerns, and I hope with my questions, I can get a little bit of clarification as I was speaking with Councilman On the applicability on Section 10, let me see, 104.3, it's all new developments. But I've been here long enough that I've seen developers or builders who come before you will bring in their proposal. And that proposal, from what I remember, usually includes the zoning, and they usually tell you how many homes they're planning on building. So my first question is, does that mean it's platted? Because they're actually coming to you and asking for your approval when they're, at the same time, they're actually saying it's platted with your approval. So, you know, when it says a new development within the city occurring on unplatted property, but when they come before you with that question, does that mean it's platted? And the other questions I had were on, when it comes to the variances, and that's 104.12, it says, "Variances to the terms of this may be granted by the city's Planning and Zoning Commission," which a builder or developer usually goes to them first. And that's usually, from what I understand, it's the zoning as well as presentation of, again, I'm going to build 100 houses, or I'm going to build 14. I'm asking that because I've seen several developments, including Blue Bell Estates and Chabola Trails, where the developer came in and it was approved by y'all or previous council for a specific zoning. And then, in one case, Chabola Trails, two months later, without notification to the neighborhood, that same developer came back and changed the zoning, which also changed the number of homes. And in that case, that same, and that was the spring of '22, they came in and all the trees and the green space was razed. And I mean, taken out, bulldozed, everything. To this day, it is still razed. They have not built, they haven't done anything, there's been no progress. So I guess my question is, are there any restrictions, especially with these variances, that would tell a developer, look, when you come in and you've asked for something, first of all, does, when they come in to talk to you, does that mean it's platted? So that means they've already got your stamp of approval? Or do they have to come in with that plan to save the trees at the same time? I didn't see that in this. And I was really curious because there's too many developments around town that, like Chabola Trails and Blue Bell Estates, they're still sitting empty after years of getting approval. And if we're going to save trees, and a developer can come in and change that zoning from whatever to whatever, and that changes also the number of homes, will they then, if they come before you a second time, will they also have to come in and have to give that plan for the trees? Because in our case, the trees are gone already. So that's really what I wanted to know, is if that, some kind of language can be included within the ordinance that puts some boundaries on when and how a developer can come in and take out trees? Thank you.
Ma'am.
Those were good questions.
Mr. Hayes.
One, this ordinance applies to all new development on unplatted property. So if they come to us and their property is already platted, then it wouldn't apply to their property. I'm not, I think I know the development you're talking about, or the proposed development that you're talking about right behind Foothills, wasn't it, that strip?
Up towards the Heights is one.
Yes, right.
The other one is Blue Bell Estates, where everything was just taken out and left.
Right. So in those cases, and I don't know this, right, right. Nothing we can do about it now. But if those two developments were to come into the city, and they were new development, which was presumably going to occur, although it hasn't occurred, and they were unplatted, then they would have to submit to the regulations of this ordinance. And so give us a tree plan. And I think in that case, again, I don't know the specifics of that property, or, and I know it was residential, they would have to give us a tree plan that we would approve, and presumably some of those trees would have been saved.
I'm sorry. I guess my question is, if a new developer comes in here with a multi-acre development, and they say, we're going to put in 200 homes.
That does not consider as a plat, no, ma'am. They would have to submit a tree survey.
At that same time?
At that same time. So the approval of a plat or the approval of, yes, we agree with 200 homes, does not constitute it as platted. It is a full plating process that they have to go through, and they would not go through that process without having a tree ordinance based off, or a tree survey based off of this ordinance.
And that would be before they come to the council as well?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. And if they change that plating, they would have to go through that process?
If it's already platted, so a replat would not count at this time. But if, so if it's already platted and they're rezoning or replating, replattings do not count at this time for that change.
Even if it...
As of right now, no. So as this develops, if we identify things that become potential problem issues, we will bring those back to council and address those. That was a concern of council. We just don't have a lot of good data on that right now. So we wanted to tackle the larger issues, which is the undeveloped, unplatted. Yes, ma'am.
Could you tell me the name of the, it was the Heights?
No, it's Chabola Trails and Blue Bell Estates are the two that I am very well, very aware of.
Okay. Thank you.
Pablo Brinkman.
One other speaker. Go ahead. Mr. Brinkman.
Good evening. Pablo Brinkman, 39, 28, Oak Park Drive. Feliz año nuevo con todos. Happy New Year, everybody. I wanted to bring a tree in here. Actually, I had it at the back of my truck. And Chief, I needed somebody petite like me to carry it in, and he wouldn't let me bring the tree in because I wanted to have it here. I appreciate all the work that's been done. I think the future's going to dictate all the issues that are going to come up. I've spoken with members of staff, developers, all the good questions that have come up. Anytime you have new ordinance that's come in, look at Fredericksburg, look at Johnson City, look at all these that are similar things, there's adaptations. When we went to our zoning, we had adaptations after because it wasn't perfect. I think this is not perfect, and I think you're going to have, every developer's going to be coming up here going ouch, ask, et cetera. There's been some studies and things like that, but the tangibles are going to be when we have a new developer come in and is going to say, this is costing me, I don't know, $430,000 to do X. Now, that will keep them from buying or developing it, or there's going to be massages on different things. What if we do this? What if we do that? At $2,000 a tree, unless you have two or three trees, no one can afford to come in and just take it off. And I know that's the meaning behind it, but I would urge staff to encourage and to put the reason behind it was to save trees, to make Kerrtucky staying beautiful and having the trees. But there's going to be, with our topography and different things, there's always challenges. We all know when you scar the Colicci, it's going to look like the front of your desk for the rest of our lives. So we want to avoid that. But I really encourage you that you're going to, I'm working with some developers that, one, completely pulled out right now. And they were going to do a 55-year-old community, the track they were in, heavily vegetated, all by junipers, some hardwoods, things like that. They looked at it. I'm trying to urge them to come back because I think it's something that the city really needs, especially the product they would deliver. It's not just more housing, it's specified for. And so heavily, a lot of amenities and things that our populace needs. But I just think that there's going to be opportunity to tweak, change, or to consider, not pull back, but maybe go a different direction. And I don't know what those are right now, otherwise I would have brought them to you on things. I'm having, you know, I work with people a lot smarter than me, and they're bringing things from the outside. So I would encourage, as they've done other developments throughout the country, not just in Texas, where they've run into this, they've said, well, here's a consideration. So thank y'all for your time. I know it's been a lot of work, and let's have a good year.
Thank you.
Take care of yourself.
All right. I remind counsel that Section 10 of the ordinance says, "City Council directs the City Manager to report back to Council on or before the expiration of 180 days of the effective date of this ordinance as to its implementation and whether any amendments need to be made." I think what the ordinance has built in is a way to meet both of your concerns, actually. It's a first step. It's not the whole race. It's a first step. All right. Any comments or questions for staff? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I'd like to make a motion that we approve ordinance number 2025-01 on second reading.
Have a second. I will second it. All right. Any discussion?
None, that I would just also echo the fact that we recognize that we are going to look at this a lot in the next coming year. We couldn't answer all the questions prior to this, but we'll be working on it.
All right. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor, so vote. It passes four to one. All right. Item 5A is a resolution adopting Kerrville City Walls Program. Mr. Rice.
All right, Mayor, Council, good evening. Really, just kind of be brief on this one, just to put some context behind this. At one point in time, I think it was talked about to figure out a way to display local, you know, artists and, you know, the Community Arts Program within two city facilities, and what would that look like? So Catherine Boyett is here to really kind of talk through the program, and we can answer any questions. But this has been, I think, a long time in the making.
Thank you. Ms. Boyett, do you have a presentation for us?
Just like three slides. Thank you. It's always a pleasure to see you. Glad to be here tonight. This, I'm here tonight on behalf of the Community Arts Program and a new initiative called the Art in Municipal Buildings Program. This is a program that curates and exhibits art within city-owned buildings on a rotating basis. So youth, emerging, and professional artists may be highlighted, and the work will be depicted, the people, places, and feelings that make the area special. It's very Kerrville-centric. And similar to the Kerrville Runs on Water 2024 campaign, where youth artists were recognized here at council, there was a collaboration among many nonprofits, and that work was displayed in town. This is an expansion of that initiative that would allow that artwork to be hung in city-owned buildings. And I'm really here tonight to authorize consent for a policy for that program to take place and answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Ms. Boyett. Any questions for Ms. Boyett?
I'm just excited about it. Very much so.
I understand that some of the works may be for sale. Is that correct?
Yes, but it would be directly to the artist.
The city would not be involved in any way in that transaction?
No.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Mayor and Council on that one, you know, that was one of the things that we wanted to make sure. We partnered with the Community Arts Program. Really, we're selecting the sites where they can put them within the city facilities, and the Community Arts Program is navigating the selections, the choices, and all that. So that way, you know, we're out of, you know, out of the fray. Any of the sales and stuff would be handled through, directly to the artist or through the Community Arts Program itself.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff or Ms. Boyett?
Well, just one. What happens if somebody wants to display their art and it's not appropriate?
It can be removed.
I'm sorry?
It can be removed. At the City Managers and the Community Arts Program's discretion.
Is there a vetting process before, I mean, is there like a criteria you have to meet in order to even be able?
Well, all of the work, as I mentioned, will be focused with themes around the people, places that make Kerrville special. So things like a theme with, like, celebrating community would be a theme, and the youth art contest would receive submissions, and we would collaborate with local nonprofits to help select that artwork. Okay. Or the outdoors, or transportation, or so themes that align with 2050 and beautifying the area with a focus on the city of Kerrville. Okay.
That's why we kept it very theme-specific.
Yes.
Any other questions?
I will just make a point on Exhibit A, Section 4. It's artwork displayed within the city hall and other buildings must be appropriate.
Yes.
So that pretty much, and there's a vetting process that I saw in there as well, under the eligibility. So hopefully, nothing inappropriate is tried to be displayed.
Family-friendly, family-friendly.
Yeah, exactly.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I would entertain a motion on 5A.
I'll move to approve Resolution Number 05-2025 for Public Art in City Facilities.
Motion's been made and seconded. Please, motion.
Thank you, counsel.
All in favor, so vote. It passes unanimously. We look forward to this program. Thank you. All right. 5B, Resolution...
I'll move to approve Resolution Number zero-five dash twenty-two-five for public art in city facilities.
The motion's been made and seconded. Please move.
Thank you, council.
All in favor, so vote. We look forward to this program. Thank you. All right, five B, Resolution four oh-four, twenty-two-five, approving an amendment to the Kerrville River Trail Master Plan. Mr. Heffernan.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Uh, before you notice, an amendment to the Kerrville River Trail Master Plan for your consideration. In July of two thousand nineteen, the Kerrville City Council adopted Resolution Number twenty-seven dash two-zero-one-nine, which amended the Kerrville River Trail Master Plan. Since then, progress has been made in planning and development, including adopting the updated Parks and Recreation Master Plan in two thousand twenty-two and the Singing Wind Master Plan shortly thereafter. Priority from City Council and EIC for the Nimitz Lake Extension was also studied. These plans reflect evolving priorities, community needs, and new opportunities for growth within Kerrville's Parks and Recreation System. Given the changes and advancements since two thousand nineteen, the Kerrville River Trail Master Plan requires an update to align with the master plans and priorities. Updating the River Trail Master Plan ensures consistency with the city's long-term vision and plans, addresses current trends and opportunities, and provides a clear plan for expanding, enhancing the River Trail system, of course pursuant to funding and easement acquisitions. It's important to remember that this is a master plan, not a design or construction plan. This means it serves as a guiding framework for future development rather than a definitive plan for implementation. The amended master plan includes several key updates to improve connectivity, address feasibility challenges, and align with recent plans. It removes the South Bank Extension from Granger McDonald Park to the Francisco's Lemos, Francisco Lemos area, highlighted in orange. I'll expand upon that in the next slide. The map reflects the downtown extension outlined in the previously, previously adopted plan, previously shown as proposed. It has been updated to coincide with the two thousand nineteen amended plan. It is highlighted in purple. The Singing Wind Connection between East Main Street and Olympic Drive has also been added to enhance trail accessibility pursuant to the master plans, and is consistent with the Kerrville Urban Trail System, known as Cuts. It's an appropriate, it's approximate a fifteen-hundred-foot connection. This is highlighted in blue, and I'll expand on that later in the presentation. It incorporates the newly constructed connections to Flat Rock Park and the Veterans Affairs Facility, highlighted in green. We've also enhanced the map's design to improve its clarity, functionality, and visual appeal. As mentioned, this amendment removes a portion of the South Bank Extension, Segment Four, seen in red on this map. This map, this is the map of the Nimitz Lake Extension. The South Bank Extension from Granger McDonald Park to the Francisco Lemos area has been removed due to findings in the River Trail West Nimitz Lake Concept Study, prepared by Hewitt Engineering. The study identified significant challenges, including steep slopes requiring multiple switchbacks, safety and emergency access concerns, regulatory constraints around the water treatment facility, and high construction costs. The cost estimate for Segment Four alone was nine-point-nine million. But keep in mind, those are two thousand twenty-three numbers, so the cost will continue to rise. Based on these findings, staff recommends concluding the trail at Granger McDonald Park as the most cost-effective and practical solution. The Parks and Recreation Advisory Board agrees with this recommendation. This aerial view of the Singing Wind Park Connection could connect East Main and Olympic Drive in the future. This extension is part of the Kerrville Urban Trail System and was included in the Singing Wind Master Plan. The amended master plan's first step in the approval process is, is the Parks and Recreation Advisory Board's approval. The board reviewed the plan and unanimously approved it at its December twelfth meeting. The next and final step is a consideration and approval by City Council. Updating the River Trail Master Plan requires the City Council's approval by adopting a resolution. This resolution would repeal the previous version from two thousand and nineteen. Staff recommends the adoption of the resolution amending the Kerrville River Trail Master Plan. I'll turn that over for questions.
Staff, have any questions?
Well, I have a comment. I mean, this, some of this was actually brought up in our, our twenty-fifty consultant meeting, especially the one that connects downtown closer to Shiner. But all in all, I, I liked all of the, the changes and edifications about extending the River Trail. I like it a lot. So, makes sense.
Other comments? I would ask, uh, Dalton and Lou, Mr. Paxton being gone, we are, we are studying the twenty-fifty plan, and there is a section on the Nimitz Lake area. Is this, is this premature to adopt this plan before that other plan is, uh, complete?
No, sir. I don't think so. Uh, we can do it, excuse me, we can do it in addition of it. Really, this one section really just focuses on just expanding that one area to try to capture a little bit more versus just trying to take a bite-sized chunks. You know, I think, I think all the River Trail stuff is going to be kind of simultaneous in nature as we get different parts of it.
Got you. Any other questions for Mr. Heffernan? All right, I'll attain a motion then on five B.
I'll make the motion to approve Resolution Number zero-four dash twenty-two-five.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor, so vote, and it passes, you know. Thank you for your presentation.
Thanks, sir.
Five C. Who's up to date? All right.
And we do have one citizen speaker signed up.
Yeah, let, let's listen to Kyle, and then we'll listen to the speaker, if that's okay. All right.
Okay, it'll just be a brief recap. This is what we discussed in, in the council workshop previously today. Uh, this is a change order for the Guardian Plaza, uh, in addition to the covered parking for, uh, the, the police and, and fire vehicles. So, uh, as we mentioned earlier, this is out of owner's contingency, and this is going to allow Burn to commence the work with, with their subcontractors. So essentially, we're, we're designating what we have had as anticipated changes to the, the GMP, the Guaranteed Maximum Price Contract. And that, like I said, that's already out of, out of our contingency that we've known that we've budgeted all along. Josh is still here with, with Burn. Should we have any questions? Uh, just let us know.
Um, let's go ahead and have the public speaker, the.
Lang Guerrero?
This is speaker.
Hi, Lang Guerrero, uh, three oh-seven Liquid Drive. Uh, I, this thing started with EA Hapi, and, uh, it was after the Prop A passed, and we decided it was, what could we do? And this, this came out of that discussion. Uh, so anyway, we did have, um, several meetings about it and, uh, ended up with having a charrette with a lot of people to get the input on the design. Peter Lewis helped us out quite a bit, uh, and we came up with a, a general design and then worked with the city to get that, those elements implemented into the, the final design from the architect. So the Guardian Plaza is an amazing thing. Uh, you know, we've all been to the Fallen Hero events where you've got the traffic going by and the buses and the noise and things like that. So this is really exciting for us. We did set up a nonprofit through the community foundation called, uh, Kerrville First Responders Foundation, I believe. And so that's been set up. Uh, I've recruited Amber Thomason to help me with the fundraising for that. Uh, we started with private calls. Our goal, hopefully, is to, um, get the first sixty thousand that they need for the, uh, the statue completed before probably Valentine's Day. And we, we raised twenty-five thousand last week, uh, to start that. So it's not that hard with, with people like Chief over there and Fire Chief as well. So, uh, but anyway, that's already started. Um, let's see. The plan is to have private donors and just make private calls and get the first third of it done for the statue, and then release it publicly and try to get as many small donations as we can, uh, through the website. And we want to see like hundred-dollar donations or twenty-dollar donations, but really get the community involved. But to get the, uh, the commission for the artist started, uh, that requires about sixty thousand dollars. So, uh, which is not too bad.
No.
But the whole project, uh, the four hundred thousand that was up there, that includes benches, the trees. We've been working with some of the local associations on the trees. Um, but that includes the entire plaza. But the statues themselves, uh, is about a hundred and eighty thousand dollars. And I also want to say thank you to Catherine Boyette, who she's gone, but, uh, CAP has done an amazing job. We had fifty-five applicants, uh, for the, the artists to build the, the statues or to, to, to create the statues. And they've whittled it, whittled it down to about five. So, uh, we're excited about that. Amber Thompson's going to be the, the Capitol Campaign Chair for this. She's actually out of town today and couldn't make it, so I decided to come and just give you all the input and answer any questions you have.
Any questions for Lang?
Sixty thousand dollars, you should be able to do that in a week.
We did twenty-five last week. It's not hard. I mean, we, no one's saying no. It's just a matter, I think it's important to have the smaller donations. So we want to get kicked off with the, the private phone calls, and, uh, and we've talked to everybody, y'all. There's certain people in town that support the police and the fire and our first responders consistently. We've been notified, all of them, so we're just waiting for all that.
Oh, Kerrville First Responders Guard.
Foundation.
Kerrville, Kerrville First Responders Foundation, and it includes fire and police. And that was designed on purpose because there are some things in the future that the police and fire can purchase together, that they may use, you know, equipment or trucks or whatever it is, but they, they may end up raising money for something that they both, for an asset they can both use. So.
I have two questions for you. First one is, when are we going to be able to see a picture of these statues?
That is up to Catherine Boyette. So the way she did it is she, she put together her art committee, uh, and all the different people. It was very widely represented, uh, all different parts of, of the town, Doyle Center, uh, the Artist Museum, the Western Artist Museum was there, but, uh, they've got it down to five. Now, the next step is for the First Responders Committee, that first committee that we met, all those people that we met together. So we're calling all them together to whittle it down to three, and then they'll make the final choice on the la, on the final one.
Okay, my next question is, are First Responders are a makeup of both men and women? And are one of those statues going to be reflective of a woman?
And don't forget the, the dog.
That's right.
I've had all those questions. You know, that's, that is, the, the, the reason we used, we went to CAP and, uh, and the reason we worked with them was because we wanted it to be a committee decision. Uh, initially, you know, any one of us, the chiefs, they could say, this is my favorite, or that's my favorite, but, but it's a collective decision. So whatever it is, it is. But, you know, you, you're welcome to reach out to Catherine and, and voice your.
Does it have any women on that commission?
Absolutely. Absolutely.
Just asking.
Yeah. No, I'm excited about this. This is really a special place. Uh, hopefully not just the Fallen Hero services, but the graduation ceremonies. Um, who knows what? So I'm excited about it.
Lang, you said website. Do y'all have a website?
We, we, we have a website. We haven't launched anything, uh, publicly yet. Uh, so once we hit the sixty, we'll go ahead and launch that, and then we'll make an announcement.
Well, thank you for everything you're doing, Lang.
Thank you. All right. To be clear, his discussion is separate from what's before us. That's a change order for the public facility, uh, project. The outline of that change order was discussed in our workshop, and it includes some preparatory work for the Guardian Plaza, but not the benches or the other elements. That'll be significant there. We have a motion then on the change order, five C.
I'll move.
What do you want?
Oh, I'm sorry. I want to make one, one comment, too, that was brought up during the workshop. This is under budget still with this change order.
Yes.
So it's, so just point of clarification on that.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
And, and I also would like to mention that some of the original, um, portions of the architectural drawing that were removed so that we could be within budget have now been added back in, and we're still under budget. So that's good news for us.
My comment's not to denigrate any work with the committee. It's just I want to keep us focused on what we're actually voting on. Is there a motion then on five C?
Yes, I'll make that motion to authorize the city manager to execute the change order for the public safety facility.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Any more comments? All in favor, so vote, and it passes five to nothing. Ms. Behrens, bring us some debits and credits, please.
Good evening. How are y'all tonight?
Good, thank you.
So Dalton and I, uh, kind of talked about financial reporting that we bring to you every month, and, uh, what we kind of decided to do was on a regular, uh, non-quarter-end month, bring you just general fund and water fund and then any outliers. Um, but this is the end of your first quarter, so oftentimes gives you a little bit better look of what's really going on. So, um, don't be alarmed. I won't bring you this size of a, of report every month, um, but just a little bit more information. So, um, of course, you know, we continue to talk about, um, inflation and economic trends and those things. And I think some of you were here when we started budgeting for fiscal year twenty-three and remember that we were at nine and a half percent inflation. And so we're down to like two-point-nine right now. So, uh, the Fed has continued to cut rates to kind of reduce that inflation over time. The reason I brought the gas on here is that is kind of a driver when it comes to overall supply prices, uh, for us as a city. And I gave you kind of three looks, um, just for information purposes. Really, an interesting fact that the blue there is national average for gas prices over time, and you can see twenty-twenty-two right there goes really closely with the June of twenty-twenty-two inflation graph. But, uh, California way higher than the national average, and, uh, us in San Antonio was the closest I could get us, is much lower than the national average. So just interesting the way, uh, fuel prices trend and then also the impact that it has on our inflation. But we are still feeling impacts of high inflation. Um, specifically, you know, we talk about personnel and what inflation has done there with not just salaries, but health insurance and all things that are included in that. Um, and we have seen some leveling in prices, but of course, you know, we're not seeing, uh, the price of eggs go down. You know, we might see them flatten out a little bit, um, but we're not seeing them increase, just not increasing at the percentage that we were seeing them for a little bit. So we're really trying to track that as close as we can. So interest revenue, um, not a revenue that the city relies on as a major funding mechanism, but has done some interesting things in the past few years. And so I just want to point out that while, um, we are feeling the impacts of inflation on one side, uh, we're also trying to capitalize on those higher rates on the other side. And so interesting when you look at rates over time, and so just looking at pool rates, um, December twenty-twenty, we were at point one-four percent. And so right now, we're at four-point-six. So our rates are going down compared to, you know, they were a high of, of five-point-six in the pools, um, for a little while. Starting to see those drop, but not dramatically drop. Um, but we have really tried to capitalize on higher interest rates for a period of time, but then also having higher cash on hand because of the bonds that we've issued. And so, um, we have kept our bonds invested separately, so we, you know, we do have the potential to have an arbitrage penalty if we earn more than is allowable by the IRS. But, um, there's kind of a give and take there to where there's a balancing act between the earnings being more than the penalty, and that's really, uh, what we fully expect to happen. But we have done a set aside for that. So we're expecting that and do those calculations every year. So general fund, uh, really quickly, kind of the same look I usually, uh, give to you. Property tax right now, uh, better than year-to-date budget estimate, but keep in mind, you know, those flatten as we go throughout the year, just depending on when kind of people pay them. Um, I'll show you a slide on that just in a second. Sales tax, same thing. I have some more information coming up. We're a little bit behind, um, year-to-date estimate. Monthly is really not the best way to look at sales tax because there's so many weird things that can happen. People pay earlier, people pay late, and, and that impacts your monthly look. So we really look at that as a rolling twelve-month average to kind of help build our trends. Um, you'll see intergovernmental revenue there is better than year-to-date estimate, but we did have a prepayment from Kerr County, so you'll see that, um, probably less than, um, or flat with budget estimate next year, I mean, next month. Um, and then service revenue is running a little bit better than estimate primarily due to EMS. So on the expense side, uh, personnel is better than budget estimate. Remember that personnel includes salaries, benefits, and, and training and any component that relates to our personnel. Um, and maintenance is better than budget right now, uh, but paving is the largest expense there. And so some expenses were in last year that maybe we thought were going to roll to this year, and so there's some timing things there, and that typically will flatten out, too. Excuse me. Um, a little bit closer look at property tax. You can see to date, we're at fifty-one percent collected. This is through December. Uh, five-year history, we show about forty-five percent. So that kind of explains why we're running better than, uh, budget estimate right now. Timing can really vary, um, but typically property tax is pretty within four or five percent. Um, the bottom graph is just showing you a historical view of property tax, um, over time, along with the rate. So you can see the rate dropping there, and that happens, um, when values grow or a number of properties grow. So as we see new properties come on, um, then oftentimes you'll see the M and O rate drop. And this is only looking at general fund. Sales tax recap. Uh, remember, we budgeted three percent lower than the fiscal year twenty-four budget. It's actually performing right now at about three percent less than we were in quarter one of twenty-four. So I don't know that that makes us smart. I think it just makes us conservative, and so we're really watching that to see what happens because we talked about month over month not being, um, really a good indicator. You can see October was eighteen percent, um, behind last year, but then November and December have both been up, and January is up. So, um, you really just don't know. So we just kind of trend it quarterly and then look at that rolling twelve-month average to really see what do we think's happening. Those graphs on the bottom, I think, are just helpful just to show you from twenty-four to twenty-five what the top four sales tax categories are. So when you think about sales tax and what comes in, these are the highest percentages on these areas. So just a little bit of change. But of course, your retail, food service, and manufacturing, for us in Kerrville, probably going to always be your top three. going to always be your top three. Looking at water fund, so right now, water sales about 26,000, better than year-to-date estimate. That's not a big number considering, you know, the, the budget, 7.8 million, but it's kind of where we're trending. That's good news for us because even if it was zero, that would mean that our model is, is working from what we really worked through that process during the, the budget process last year and brought y'all some models and some different scenarios. Sewer a little bit behind, but again, that's not a big number compared to '24, and we're still early in the year to see what's happening. Just a reminder, December, January timeframe, December, January, February, remember sewer averaging months, so just be aware of water use to anyone who's listening, and that's when we set sewer averaging based on that consumption during that point in time. On the expenses, maintenance is better than budget, but again, it's early. A lot of times we'll see some spikes in maintenance as it starts getting warmer in the water system when we start having breaks and those things. The transfer out higher than last year. Remember, we increased our sustainability transfers in the budget process, so that's primarily why you're seeing those higher. Development services, a really tricky one to try to trend and estimate because it's development-driven. And so we try to just work with Drew and his team to see what they think is coming up, projects that are on the horizon, and oftentimes we'll see, you know, an influx of, of permits and those kind of things, and then we'll see some downtrends. So this one is just a lot harder. We don't really budget to estimate like we do in the other funds because we don't, historical data is not good for this, so we simply divide by 12. So, you know, if this is good or bad compared to budget, it is what it is as of the end of quarter, and we'll update that every month and continue to work with them to see, see how they're trending. Their expenses are low, so savings is, is difficult for them, too, because they're primarily personnel-driven. On the hot side, this really does typically trend with sales tax, and we're finding the same thing is happening again. We are ahead of '24. Last year, we were significantly behind the last year, so I don't know if that's, you know, good news or not. At this early in the year, we are year two of three for our Community Arts Program. We got an update on that earlier, so excited about that. Remember, that's partially funded by a grant from the community foundation, too, so they'll be funding that for one more year. All the expenses in line with budget in the hot fund, remember, we have that transfer to HHHC that's been on the books for several years, and when we need that transfer, then we'll, then we'll transfer that over to the project.
Before you leave that slide, I'm not an accountant, so I, I looked at the budget for the revenues as 1,008, and the expenditures are 2,900. And Dalton did tell me there was a transfer that occurred that made the difference so wide.
Yes, that's that, that tran, that project transfer to HHHC. And remember, this isn't a fund that has to be balanced, so when you have fund balance, we can dip into that fund balance for whatever reason council sees fit, as long as it's allowable by hot expenditures. But that's what it is. So if you remove that million dollars you see on the bottom, that Library, Library Memorial transfer, that's where we're actually paying the HHHC project out of. So if you were to remove that, then you'd be right in line with budget. Yeah, that's why. So I'm not going to read our schedule to you, but I wanted to include this so that you have it, and at least that way you can start preparing for what's coming. We're already working on budget. We will be bringing you the ACFA in March, so we're working on finishing up financial statements. Those do usually take three to four months to finish, so we're working on them, we're wrapping them up, and we'll be bringing you that presentation along with presentation of audit in March. So this just kind of goes through, we've set some tentative budget workshops, and then your June and July workshops, those are pretty hard dates, so that'll allow you to put those on the calendar, along with the presentation of the proposed budget already in August, and then when those first and second readings will be. So that'll give you a little bit of help as you're planning your travel and those kind of fun things coming into the spring and summer. So happy to answer any questions you might have on the financial front.
Any questions or comments from Ms. Behrens?
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie.
All right, we have an item for executive session. I need a motion for us to go into executive session.
I'll make the motion for council adjournment to executive session under the Texas Government Code 551.071, if you can confer with council. Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? All right, we are back from executive session. No action was taken. We have nothing to report from executive session. Are there any items for future agendas?
Not at this time.
I do want to tell the council that this was a fairly light agenda. I don't see that happening again for a while. Our next, in February, we'll be talking probably about an annexation. We'll probably be talking about debt for K-Pub. A lot of big decisions next month, so we're not going to be getting home at 7:30 probably for a little while. All right, any other...
Too much before you...
Just like old times.
Old times. All right, so we're, I'm going to adjourn the meeting here at 7:25.